Have a smile on their face.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese. Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I have something I'd like to comment on under miscellaneous at the end, please.
Okay.
One announcement, Mr. Mayor. Under miscellaneous, one announcement.
One announcement, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things I'd like to mention under miscellaneous.
Under miscellaneous?
Sure.
Any others? We'll move to the consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as such.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull the Municipal Utilities Minutes of the 23rd of May.
Pull Municipal Utilities Minutes of the 23rd of May. Any others?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull the accounts payable through you in two minutes.
Okay? We'll pull those. And Councilman DeBlick, would you like to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about at the Municipal Utilities, at the 23rd of May meeting, they were talking about meeting on June 6th, which was today. They discussed some rate increases and rate increase proposals. At their meeting today, they proposed rate increases for electrical customers of a 7% rate increase in January 2011 and in January, excuse me, that would be July of 2011, 7%. And January of 2012 would be a 7% increase. And they had passed a motion today to set up a public hearing at their next meeting, for the Municipal Utilities' next meeting, which after that, they would refer to the council. But just want to make you aware what they're talking about, rate adjustments, and get some of the justification for that here. Somebody wants to see that, they're speak to me, or Utilities Manager Bruce Gom. So I guess if they're, it's just an information item to make the council aware of that meeting and their action today. If there are no questions, I would motion to file the MUC minutes.
Second. Motion on the table already. We should have approved the other minutes with the ones that were pulled, besides the ones that were pulled. So let's go back and do that if we can. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Why is that for the ones that are pulled?
It's already been moved.
I think we did that.
Okay.
We had the motion.
Then, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the Municipal Utilities Commission?
We need to vote on the first one.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And then we'll have a motion.
Motion to approve the Municipal Utilities Minutes of the May 23rd.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 23rd Municipal Utilities Minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That carries. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comment and some questions. I'm wondering if we couldn't have another line item on the checks that are made out, just some brief description of what they're for, so I don't have to bring it up all the time. But would that be possible, just to have another line, next to major checks, you know, it's not anything over $10,000?
I'm not sure. It's a software concern, so I guess we'd have to pass the Finance Director. This is their big computer printing this out, not a spreadsheet, so.
Oh, it is, yeah. Would that be possible? Steve?
We'll see what we can come up with. We'll contact the software company. If not, we can maybe work on some other type of format that would give a brief description.
Okay. And then I do have a couple of questions here. The, there's a rather large check to Swenson Motor Company. I'm assuming that was for a vehicle?
Would have been, yes.
Don't we buy through a pool, a state pool or something?
Yes, but...
That goes through a local dealer?
Yes.
Okay. I see Hogg Implement also, a large check there. Was that for a piece of equipment?
Yes.
That was in our capital budget to spend then?
On some of these where they have a shorter name, you begin to see the explanation, but the computer doesn't go any further than that.
I saw that.
Kubota.
How about Hawkins, Inc.? That was $16,000. I've never heard of them, never seen them on them, just wondering what it was.
You know, Steve?
I don't, I don't recall.
That one we'd have to check.
How about, I see we wrote a check to Midwest Technology, too. Is that for renting something out there?
That's for tax abatement.
Tax abatement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then Stacy's Nursery, I saw a rather large check there, too. What do we have them do?
Annual tree purchases that are quoted off.
Say that again?
It's for the annual purchase of trees.
Oh, trees.
Through the council.
Okay. And then one more, the West Central Integration, is that like a semi-annual check to them?
That's, yeah, for two quarters, first two quarters of 2011.
So it's 42 total then for the year?
That's right.
I thought we'd gone down to 30 and I may have mistaken them. Okay, that was it. I move to approve those accounts payable through June 2.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the accounts payable through June 2, 2011. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We go now into number seven, the scheduled public hearings. Mick, would you like to address us on that?
I will, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce Tony Hunstead from Group 227 at St. Mary's, who's here working on his citizenship merit badge. Mr. Mayor?
You?
I asked him earlier if he was planning on giving a speech, but he declined.
No speech tonight?
Maybe next time he will. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the ordinance being considered tonight is for a $1,825,000 general obligation bond, and that's to finance our street improvement program this year, any new construction or reconstruction. When we get to discussion of the public works and safety minutes, we'll talk about how the frost boils and potholes are going to be repaired, and that's under a different financial scenario. In the Public Works Department, our Public Works Committee Minutes, we'll also talk about adding some street reconstruction activity, but again, that will be through a different financing vehicle. This bond issue will cover the financing of all the street improvements that we discussed at an earlier improvement hearing. The total project cost, of course, is a combination of these improvement bonds, assessments against benefited property owners. We have some state aid funds involved in the overall financing picture, as well as use of our utility improvement fund. The city council, in tonight's action, is actually required to take two steps. One, when you close the hearing, Mr. Mayor, then we will need to vote on the ordinance, which authorizes the issuance of the bonds for the 2011 street improvement program. And then following that action, you have before you a resolution that provides for the competitive sale of the bonds, which will take place on July 5th. We'll open the bids in the morning, and then later that day, that evening, the city council will consider award of those bonds. So the ordinance, and then followed by a resolution.
Are there any questions from the public? If not, I will close the public hearing. What would the council like to do about? Councilman Anderson?
I would introduce the ordinance authorizing the sale of the bonds.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to authorize an ordinance authorizing the issue of a bonds in a total of $1,825,000. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And then we also need a resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of $1,825,000. So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to provide a resolution for the competitive negotiated sale of $1,825,000 for street improvements. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. With that, we'll move into the next scheduled hearing. I would like to open that hearing. Kevin, would you like to speak to us about that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, you have before you an ordinance amending Section 3.6b of our municipal code, which is our section on alcoholic sales. The Wilmer Baseball LLC, the legal name for the Wilmer Stingers, has worked with our state legislature to open the door up for strong beer sales. The combination of their existing 3.2% malt liquor license with a new wine license will allow them to sell strong beer. This amendment opens up the eligible premises, which simply states that after our current ordinance, which says only restaurants with a seating capacity of at least 25 guests, or theaters with live performances, and we're adding, "And a person who is the owner of a summer collegiate league baseball team, or a person holding a concessions or management contract with the owner for beverage sales at the ballpark or stadium located within the city, for the purposes of summer collegiate league baseball games at the ballpark or stadium." This wine license is recommended by staff earlier, and so this is consistent with the state law that was recently passed. Upon adoption of this ordinance, if it's so adopted, the Wilmer Stingers can sell their strong beer when the ordinance is published a second time, which should be next Tuesday. It is staff's recommendation that we approve this ordinance.
Are there any comments from the public? If not, we will close this public hearing, and ask the council what they would like to do about this. Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve an ordinance amending the Wilmer Municipal Code, Section 3.6, by adding a section allowing the on-sale of wine and malt liquors at college collegiate league games. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
The motion carries. At this particular time, we'll go into the presentation of the final draft of the charter amendments, and Mr. Mesky.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Shawn Mesky. I'm the current chair of the Wilmer Charter Commission. Back in March of 2009, we started our work, and over two years later, we are glad to say that we are done, at least with the final draft that we're presenting. In fall, I think of last year, we had a fairly lengthy presentation here with a draft. We have revisited that draft, and after, I think, we had three joint workshops with the council, and a note from the attorney from the League of Minnesota Cities, I believe we've come up with a final draft. And so what I'm asking tonight is I'm going to request that the council direct the city attorney to put this amended charter in ordinance form and call for a public hearing.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Mesky? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're asking us to forward this to the city attorney to put it in ordinance form? Correct. And then bring it back for a public hearing, talk about it, and then up or down vote on it? Correct. Okay. Is this similar to one we had prior, or is this...
From the last draft that we have, I think this is actually unaltered.
Even though we had a few concerns?
Absolutely. We are very well aware of those, and we know we will have a discussion at the workshop, or at the next, sorry, at the public hearing.
And then the ordinance will just be a duplicate of this, basically?
Correct.
So that we would need to pass the entire thing up or down, and not section by section, or...
Correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that's the only way we can present it.
Yes. The only way we can do it?
Before the council.
Okay. I mean, I recall last year, we changed a couple items in the charter referring to the hospital board, and utilities asked for another one for terms, term limits on their boards. We changed them without doing the whole ordinance.
Okay. The Charter Commission could remit their amendments to you, section by section, if they're choosing not to. The whole draft is there before you. Red line for new entries and strike through legislative print for strikeout language.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with it, but you know how I feel on a couple items, so it's, I would say it's at risk.
Mick, I'd ask you what we need to do at this particular point? Is there a vote, or...
Well, as my understanding, in this process, we need to set a public hearing date, at which time, well, maybe Kevin's better equipped to answer the question, but eventually you need to establish a hearing date and then take public testimony before you make your decision.
Right, and I'm just not knowing the workload with the city attorney to set the hearing tonight. I think the motion should be to direct him to put it in ordinance form. Two weeks is too soon. I don't know if 30 days is. I believe the law, state law, says you must take action within 60 days, not optional. So I think at this point, we'd wait for the return draft before we'd set the hearing.
And direct the city attorney?
Would that be fair, Rich? That gives you ample time.
It would be appropriate to direct the ordinance. One clarification, 60 days, if Kevin referred to starts, will you get the ordinance from me? Doesn't start today.
Any more discussion with the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more comment. I have a comment on, a couple comments, actually. I know that somebody was trying to shrink the size of this, and didn't get shrunk. And it reminds me, it goes on out east in Washington, where they pile everything into one bill, and instead of considering certain sections separately because they know they're controversial, and then whoever's got the upper hand, you know, takes care of it. I'm disappointed that it's brought all in one chunk and not done by section. I mean, it was, there certainly is an option to bring sections that are at risk at a different time, and I'm just disappointed that it turned out this way. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion? So moved. Second. Motion has been made and seconded to send the charter to the city attorney.
And direct the attorney to put it in ordinance form.
To put it into ordinance form. And that would be a, oh, just a motion. Could we, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
That motion carries. Thank you, Shawn. Is there anyone, now we move into the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there anyone scheduled to speak?
I didn't look, Mr. Mayor, but I don't believe so.
Would anyone care to speak? Last opportunity. All right. Then we move into the, no, I'm sorry. This would be the time. Come on up, son.
I'm Tony Hunstead.
I'm Tony Hunstead, and I have a problem with the speed zone on Wilmer Avenue through the school zone, through the middle school. I ride bike through there every day, and I think there should be at least a, you could say, like a slowdown zone, or a school zone, through there, from 12th Street all the way through the middle school.
12th Street through the...
Middle school parking lot. I know they already have no left turns out of the middle school, from an hour before school to an hour after school.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we'll have the engineering and police departments take a look at that and see what we can.
Someone respond to the young man here?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll get back to you, and someone from the city will respond to. Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Anyone else care to speak? And I will close this open forum, and move right into the departmental report from the city attorney.
Before I start on my report, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just to add, I think I'm adding to what Councilman DeBlick said about the proposed rate increase at the utilities. It is supposed to be on their website, so if people want to see the information that the commission acted on today, if it isn't on there today, it should certainly be on there tomorrow, but it was my understanding they would have all of that information on their website. And of course, I would imagine David Little will have it right up in the Wilmer paper, too, but the, so to speak, exact information will be on their website. As in past years, my report is divided into the criminal prosecution part of the city attorney's job, and what I've always referred to as civil matters could probably just as well be said as things other than the criminal prosecution part. I'll start with the criminal prosecution part, and there's three categories, as most of you have probably heard year after year from me, that the criminal prosecution is divided into, which is the petty misdemeanors, the misdemeanors, and the gross misdemeanors. My office does not prosecute felonies. All of the felonies that occur in the city of Wilmer would be prosecuted by the county attorney. In respect to petty misdemeanors, they are not considered to be crimes, they are considered to be civil offenses. You do not have a right to a public defender. You do have the right to hire your own attorney if you wish, if you're charged with a petty misdemeanor. And of course, being a civil offense, jail time is not part of the penalty. The maximum penalty is strictly a $300 fine on any petty misdemeanor. Typically, the petty misdemeanors are what my office has bench trials on, meaning a trial without a jury. A judge hears the case and makes the decision on it. During 2010, I had 19 petty misdemeanor offenses that went to bench trials. This compares to 14, excuse me, 14 in 2009 and 21 in 2008. Of these 21, 16 were traffic matters. The other were such things as noisy gatherings, zoning violations, and possession of a small amount of marijuana. Continuing on page two, misdemeanors, that's the largest number of cases that I handle are within the misdemeanor category. The vast majority of misdemeanors are initiated by the police department issuing a tab charge. Occasionally, I will issue a long-form complaint on a misdemeanor, but normally that is not required. An example of where it would be required is where we don't know where the defendant is, so can't mail them a summons or a tab charge from the police department. I simply do a long-form complaint, asking the court to issue a warrant, indicating that we do not know where the defendant is and need a warrant issued. The misdemeanors in 2010 that were referred to my office and caused you to remember, these are just the matters that come to my office. The statistics in here are not the statistics for all of the charges that the police department made. They are for the matters where people have pled not guilty. So in 2010, we opened 259 misdemeanor files. That compared to 311 in 2009 and 306 in 2008. Actually, I was surprised that the number of 259 was as high as it was. As you may recall from my report last year, excuse me, July 1st of 2009, a considerable number of misdemeanors by court edict became payables, meaning that people did not have to appear in court as they typically would on a misdemeanor. And in fact, by court edict, a lot of these misdemeanors became petty misdemeanors if people wanted to just pay the fine and not appear in court. I kind of assumed that a lot more people would take advantage of that than did, as you can see by the comparison in the numbers, only approximately 50 people chose to, or should say 50 people less, chose to ask for either a court-appointed attorney or came to court with their own attorney, in which case it remains a misdemeanor. So in other words, if you're charged and given a citation, for example, driving after revocation, historically, that's been a misdemeanor. Prior to July 1st of 2009, you had to appear in court. After July 1st of 2009, you can simply send in the fine. However, if you say, "I'm not guilty of this," or for whatever reason, you don't want to just send in the fine, you appear in court, then it will go back to being a misdemeanor. And the usual case is that somebody comes to court and gets a public defender, or as I've indicated, in a few cases, they bring a private attorney to court. Then the rules for misdemeanors apply. If they're found guilty, it's fair game to sentence them to not only a fine, which the maximum on misdemeanors is $1,000, and a maximum of 90 days in jail. So by opting not to simply just mail in the money, they are risking possible jail time by opting to come in and get a public defender or contest the case with a private attorney. The cases in 2010 of a misdemeanor level that we opened files on are listed at the top of page three, are the most common ones. The assault cases, whether they were domestic or other fifth-degree assaults, we opened 55 files, which happened to be the same number we opened in 2009. Underage consumptions actually went up some. 16 files were opened, as opposed to seven in 2009. 16 files were opened, as opposed to seven in 2009. No insurance, 20, as opposed to 23 in 2009. Other significant ones, driving after suspension and cancellation, went up to 24 compared to 13 in 2009. Disorderly conducts, 27, as opposed to 20 in 2009. Criminal damage to property, 13, as opposed to 17 in 2009. False name or obstructing legal process, 11 cases, as opposed to 17. With respect to gross misdemeanors, in every gross misdemeanor case, I am required to prepare a long-form complaint for the court. Initially, in the DWI area and in the gross misdemeanor no insurance area, the court allows the police department to start the file by filing what's called a gross misdemeanor tab charge. However, I have 36 hours to file a long-form complaint after they file that citation, if the person is being held in jail. If they aren't, then I have until essentially their next appearance to file a long-form complaint. Gross misdemeanors are subject to a $3,000 maximum fine and/or one year in jail. In 2010, we did 66 gross misdemeanor long-form complaints, which is a substantial drop from the number we did in 2009, when we did 119. 2008, 96. In 2007, we did 116. You can see on the page four, the area where there were significant decreases, gross misdemeanor DWIs, which fall into the category of a repeat DWI offender, and by repeat, I mean it's second or more within 10 years, or they tested over .20, or they refused to test, or they had a child 16 years of age or younger in the car. That would classify, those are the areas that classify as gross misdemeanor DWIs. You can see the number we did in 2010 dropped 19 from 65 down to 46. Driving after cancellation IPS, the IPS means inimical to public safety, i.e., your driving privileges have been canceled because of the repeat DWI offenses. School bus stoparm violations also dropped significantly, which hopefully is a good thing. The violations hopefully are not occurring out there, and we're finally seeing some drop in that from 24 in 2009 to 11 in 2010. No insurance, we actually did more. We did six gross misdemeanor no insurance complaints, as opposed to two in 2009, two in 2008, and three in 2007. Other court hearings that I appeared for in 2010, I appeared in 64, excuse me, 645 other hearings. This compares to 807 in 2009, 866 in 2008, and 948 in 2007. These types of hearings are the bench trials that I previously mentioned for petty misdemeanors, probation violation hearings, pre-trial conferences, evidentiary hearings, omnibus hearings, motion hearings, plea hearings, sentencings, trial management conferences, and restitution hearings. Police investigations, the police department, not quite on a daily basis, but multiple times during each week sends over reports that the officers have put together where they're not sure whether or not a person should be charged. During 2010, 124 police reports were sent over for my review. I believe that is the first time we've ever gone over 100 reports coming over for review. In 2009, it was 93. In 2008, it was 97. In 2007, it was 81. Of those 124 police reports that came over, I denied prosecution on 74 of them. 32 were accepted for prosecution, and the balance were returned to the police department for further work and investigation. Victim notifications, any crime that has a victim, which typically would be your domestic assaults or other assaults, property crimes, we send a notice to the victim advising them of what their rights are, telling them that if they have a financial result as a result of the crime, they can file a claim with the court. In fact, we'll do the basics. If they notify my office that they do want to file a claim, we'll begin the paperwork for them and send it out to them to complete. In 2010, we did 74 contacts with victims, as compared to 133 in 2009 and 128 in 2008. Legislative changes, most significant change in the legislature in 2009, which, excuse me, 2010, which becomes effective July 1st of this year, is a specification by the legislature of what the revocation period is going to be of a person's driver's license, if they are a repeat offender in DWI, or if they test .16 or more, the minimum time their license is going to be revoked, starting July 1st is 2011, and depending upon their DWI history, the time can go up to six years revocation. This is the penalty that's looking people in the eyes, so to speak, but they can avoid that penalty if they agree to the new breath-testing ignition interlocking device that they can put on their car. You can be given, if you're one of these people, you can be given a limited license that will allow you to drive if you have that interlocking device on your car, which before starting the car requires you to provide a breath sample, and if your breath is tested at .02 or less, or I should say, less than .02, you're able to start the car. If you test .02 or more, the car won't start. And the charge for that is $100 a month, a service fee to the company that has these devices, plus an initial fee of $50. I think this is probably going to result in a lot more driving after revocation tickets being written, because I think a lot of these people are not going to be able to afford the $100 a month for the privilege to be able to continue to drive as long as they have the device on their car. I guess only time is going to tell on that, but that's another way that we're trying to keep the drunks off the road. With respect to civil matters, civil forfeitures, as you're aware, a number of vehicles of repeat offenders get forfeited for multiple DWI offenses. In 2010, we had six contested actions in court. We had a total of 17 vehicles that were forfeited for alcohol-driving offenses during 2010. Licenses and insurance certificates, I review every license that the city issues, and I review the accompanying certificate of insurance that the applicant for the permit submits with it to verify that it does have the proper amount of coverage, as well as has been issued to the proper party, and that the city is included as additional insured. The number reviewed in the past year is essentially the same every year. Respect to the Human Rights Department complaints, none were made during 2010, and none are currently pending. Other civil matters that my office handles include sending of collection letters, which Mr. Oaken's office sends over billings that they have sent out that are not responded to, and then I send out collection letters. During 2010, 21 collection letters were sent out. Final civil-type matter of significance during 2010, which I spent a considerable amount of time on, was the deed grant to MinWest for the University of Minnesota project. That actually started in the fall of 2009 with discussions with the MinWest people. First draft of the lease came out in January of 2010. Multiple drafts between the city and MinWest were prepared for the next six, seven months, and then, at that point, the University of Minnesota legal department got involved. And basically, we started over. When I say "we," Brad Schmidt is the attorney for MinWest, and he and I thought we'd put together what was pretty acceptable, but not apparently in every respect to the attorneys for the University of Minnesota. So, we continued working on that, and it was finally signed late in January of this year. So, that deal, bringing the University of Minnesota to the MinWest campus, is now in place. I think they are still remodeling the building that the university will be occupying out there, but as with most things that are going on out at MinWest, this is a huge and significant project to benefit the city of Wilmer. The University of Minnesota is obligating themselves to be there for 20 years, and the lease can be extended and hopefully will after the first 20 years is up. That concludes my report. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you for a very great report, very thorough report, Mr. Ronnie.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council?
The only question.
Mr. Malaman?
Rich, I'm sure you probably get this information from the police department. As far as the number of people driving without driver's license, in other words, never had one, or are underage, or no permit, is that really defined in here? Is that pretty common or nonexistent?
I'd say it's very common, and the number of arrests has gone up considerably in the last few years, because the squad cars, as you probably know, have onboard computers. And the State Department of Vehicle Services does tie in a motor vehicle registration with the driver's license. So, in other words, if an officer runs a license plate and it comes back as being owned by Steven Ammon, and Steven Ammon does not have a driver's license, that'll pop up on the screen at the same time, telling the officer that the registered owner does not have a driver's license. If the driver of the vehicle, in the hypothetical I'm using, appears to be a male individual, the officer will stop the car to verify whether or not it is the registered owner that's driving it, and, of course, normally it is, and so there are far more DAR, driving after revocation, driving after suspension, driving after cancellation, tickets being issued now since the onboard computers came in than there ever used to be. And, you know, it's surprising that people haven't figured this out, because the bulk of the ones that I'm prosecuting now, that's how they get stopped. Their drivers, the license plate is run, it pops up, the registered driver, a registered owner does not have a driver's license for either one of those three reasons, or never has had a license. So, definitely on the increase.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ronnie?
Thank you much.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move right into the Finance Committee report from Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was a public forum, and there was no one to speak at that time. Second item has to do with liquor license violations. In pursuit to a May 6, 2011 liquor compliance check that was conducted by the Wilmer Police Department, staff presented the list of retail establishments that violated Municipal Code Section 3-2, selling or giving intoxicating liquor to persons to whom sale is prohibited. Two establishments incurred their first violation, for which representatives were present to explain measures that they were going to take to eliminate future violations. One of the suggestions that they had, was it made a lot of sense, was to have the training that the police department puts on, have that taped and put on a CD so that that could be used to train incoming servers. And there's also the possible use of some technology that was talked about. El Tapatillo was represented by manager Juan Valencia in Cafe Persepolis, was represented by owner John M. Emmoni, and this was for information only. I might add that we have been working on a change to the liquor ordinance. I think that that will be ready to probably go to Public Works next week. We've got a little bit of work to do, and we'll get that information forwarded to staff, and at least they can take a look at what we've been working on on that. So, that's just a heads-up on that. The third item was the Elks premise permit renewal. We reviewed an application from the Wilmer Elks organization to renew their premise gambling permit from the State Gambling Control Board. The local unit of government must vote on the application. If the premise permit is approved, the resolution of approval is submitted with the application to the licensing section of the Gambling Control Board. There was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to recommend approval of a two-year premise permit.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve a two-year premise permit for the Elks. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Docan?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries.
The next item were some reports, and we looked at the Cushing &amp; Ross Trust Report from April 2011. That was for information only. Councilmember Docan acknowledged the West Central Tribune article on the Rice Memorial Hospital net profit in March, and he also questioned the vehicle personnel policy. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee, from May 23rd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll go with that into the Public Works Safety Committee by Mr. Christiansen filling in for Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on Tuesday, May 24th. The first item for discussion was street repair. We were looking at several items related to the street repair, and they were presented to the committee by our Public Works Director. Staff developed a list of specific areas resulting from the frost boils and all the utility cuts. Again, it was explained to the committee that the strategy the staff is proposing to use in order to repair the streets, and that is, the smaller segment of the streets will be repaired as proposed and completed by the Public Works staff at an estimated cost of $16,952. The balance of the frost boil repair bid and an estimated cost of $352,000 would be bid to private contractors. Staff proposed funding the contracted portion of the project from reserves from Rack 8. The project is estimated to take three weeks to complete. The committee discussed the funding options, and a motion was made, seconded, passed, to the following, and I will introduce a resolution to adopt a preliminary budget to move the funds in the amount of $352,000 from Rack 8 reserves into a project budget, and authorize staff to advertise for bids.
Second. A motion, excuse me, a motion has been made and seconded to adopt a preliminary budget to move the funds in the amount of $352,000 from Rack 8 reserves into a project budget and authorize staff to advertise for bids. Now, roll call.
Two, seven.
He's introducing the first resolution for the preliminary budget, Mr. Mayor. The second resolution will authorize the call for bids.
Oh, okay. So, where do we go from here?
Roll call on the 352.
Roll call on a 352,000, 352,000. Roll call.
Councilmember Docan?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries.
Our Public Works Director then proposed reconstructing. Is there a second motion to be made before this?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Now, we introduce the resolution calling for bids.
Okay. Well, I will make that resolution, then, to authorize staff to advertise for bids. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to authorize the staff to authorize for bids. Roll call. Any discussion?
Question. Mr. Mayor, I looked briefly over the streets that received all these frost boils, and I understand that we have to take care of our streets. I do question some of the costs associated with patching these streets versus rebuilding them. I think we're throwing good money after bad, especially on one street that I mentioned, the Holly on Seventh Avenue Southeast, and there are several others, that I think you're at the point where throwing $20,000 to patch a 20-by-30 or 40-foot area, you're already over at 50% of the street width. I don't get it. The rest of the streets are all cobblestone, broken up, and have not been crack sealed in years. They haven't been seal-coated, and now we're looking at patching it, and it seems to me that we're, we should maybe review this, and I have not driven every street of the recommendation that Holly made. I'm not faulting her in any way. And I mentioned that previously at some other meetings, I would be not opposed to extend and complete more streets in the city, even though it might mean juggling some funds over to the community investment funds to pay for the 25% share of the city, the city's obligation. I still think we should be doing that. I don't think the cost is going to get any cheaper, and I think we should move on it. I think there's several streets also that are, that we're doing. One in particular is Becker Avenue. When you look at Becker Avenue Southeast that we approved at the last hearing, I don't question that it needs to be done, and the infrastructure needs to be taken care of, but that street by far is five or 10 times better than a lot of the streets that we're patching right now. I think we're flip-flopping on some of this, and I think our priorities may should be clarified or reviewed. It's a cost issue and the right choice or right use of money, and I question the use of our funds right now to patch these streets when they're obviously beyond deteriorate, they're beyond repair. That's just my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I thought staff had done a really good job of analyzing the streets. You know, when you look at that map up there, and you start counting the frost boils, there are probably in the neighborhood of 80 or 90 different areas that we're having to address. We did, in fact, determine that there were a number of streets, Steve, that were beyond repair, and Mr. Christensen's going to get into that in the next paragraph when he talks about adding some of the streets to our reconstruction program. Much of it depends on the overall cost of a project. The city of Womer has found itself over the years becoming more and more strapped by the low interest earnings in our community investment fund, and we're just not able to do as much as we've always been in the past. That accounts in large part for the reason of setting up that utility fund. We're essentially utilizing that in the same manner as the intent of the community investment fund, and so we're going to be able to leverage more streets. When we did our analysis, we looked at our five- and 10-year reconstruction program to see how many of those streets that are being repaired actually were scheduled for reconstruction in the very near future. And again, we can only do so many in a given year with the limited resources we have. And so when I say I think the staff's done a really good job, they've taken all of this into consideration in making a recommendation to the City Council. With regard to Becker Avenue, we're talking about an overlay, which is an ongoing maintenance program that is a regularly scheduled activity and should extend the life of that street for quite some time.
I understand that, and I realize taking the money out of the Rack Eight account is our last choice. I, my personal thoughts are, Mick, I understand I haven't reviewed every street, and I'm not a civil engineer, I don't know the basis of the condition of the asphalt underneath and the amount of aggregate, but I just know that they're falling apart. And I, I just think that through the years, and one of my priorities when I ran to the City Council, is to look at these streets, and I think we're shifting our priorities into capital improvement projects rather than maintaining what we have. And I think there has to be a large emphasis on crack sealing and seal coating in this community, and that's our obligation to maintain those streets, and I think we've been falling behind.
Well, I think we are doing a better job of crack sealing and seal coating. Some of these streets where we're experiencing these frost boils have a limited base and minimal asphalt. These are streets that were constructed many, many years ago, and at the time, well, you know, I'm not going to go back and fault those people that designed and built those streets, those were the accepted standard of the day. While we're beefing them up.
I understand.
As we build them today, and our, the streets we're building in 2010 and 2011 are going to last considerably longer than ones built in the 60s and 70s.
I understand that. We're doing them upright this time, I appreciate that. Just, just some comments I wanted to clarify and get off my chest, and again, I'm not opposed to, not without hearing from our constituency on passing an improvement project for assessing people, but I think right now, we, there's some streets that we should not even be putting a diamond to, shouldn't even be putting a shovel to. We should just be reconstructing them, and I know that's not easy to do with the finances, but I think it's a matter of the council and mayor reprioritizing where our money's being spent and concentrating on our infrastructure of our cities, and our city, and I'd just like to share that with you. Thank you.
Any further comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And motion carries.
At that time, our Public Works Director proposed reconstructing several highly deteriorated streets by adding them to the existing contract with Dunick's for project number 1101. These streets are 20th Avenue Southwest from 22nd to 25th Street, 25th Street Southwest from 20th Avenue to 21st Avenue, 11th Avenue Southeast from 6th Street to 9th Street, and 4th Avenue Southeast from 24th Street to 25th Street. It is estimated that these added streets would increase the contract price by approximately $439,000 without engineering, which would be within the 25% of the contract price that is allowed for add-ons. Staff is proposing financing the improvements through the PIR funds and reimburse through the 2012 bond issue. The actions necessary to proceed with this will include approval of the intent to reimburse, adoption of a preliminary budget, and an order and improvement hearing. I will introduce the first motion, that would be to order an improvement hearing for project number 1101-12.
Second.
A motion has been made to order an improvement report for project number 1101-12. Discussion. Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It states here 11th Avenue from 6th Street to 9th Street. There's a huge, as you know, breakup from, I would say, in the parking lot of the First Baptist Church going to 6th Street. Are we going to, is that going to be part of it? Okay, so you say 6th Street, but you're going to go west and catch that? Okay, very good, thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
I will then introduce the second motion, which is to adopt the preliminary budget.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt a preliminary budget. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
I will then move to adopt a resolution establishing procedures related, relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt a resolution establishing the procedures for relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
At that time, we discussed two other highly deteriorated streets, 19th Street Northwest from Gortner Avenue to the north end of the cul-de-sac, and 12th Street Southwest from Becker to Trot. They were both recommended to be included as an additional project to be bid out later this summer and constructed yet this season. It was then noted that 19th Street Northwest has already gone through the improvement hearing process, but 12th Street Southwest developed recently when a failure occurred in the sanitary sewer line and bad soils and failed pipe were discovered along the entire block. Our staff requested the same three actions to be taken on this project, and I will introduce the first motion, and that is to order an improvement report for projects number 1111 and 1112.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to order an improvement report for project numbers 1111 and 1112. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
I would also introduce, introduce a motion to adopt the preliminary budget for project number 1112.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the preliminary budget for project number 1112. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
With that, I will adopt, adopt, introduce the third motion, which is to adopt a resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt a resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
And before I go on to the second item, I would like to ask Holly, is High Avenue anywhere in the mix somewhere down the road?
I have to double-check, but it's probably within our five-year program, which we put together a five-year street program, I believe, last year, or 2009 or 2010, and we're going to have to revisit that because it was a draft at the time, and some of these streets, you know, were scheduled for maybe 2012, and so we'll have to revisit it, and at that time, we can take a look at High Avenue again. I know that street is, is in need of some, some work.
Repair. Thank you. Item number two had to do with consideration of relocating our skateboard. We did receive three quotes for the construction of a concrete slab to relocate the skateboard park from the former Washington Elementary School parking lot over to the Swanson Field Tennis Courts. The proposed area would be 100 by 100 feet, and the Womer School District has budgeted $25,000 to fund the project. This amount will need to be increased in order to cover the costs, or the project will be downsized. Public Works staff will prep the site and install the fencing. It was recommended to, by staff, to enter into an agreement to construct the slab with Hanson Concrete. A motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to accept the low quote of Hanson Concrete for the amount of not to exceed $28,890 to construct that skateboard park, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the low quote of Hanson Concrete not to exceed $28,890,000 to construct the skateboard park and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. Discussion. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the difference between the $28,890 and $25,000, that's a city responsibility, that of $3,900?
We're going with the $25,000 number. I think we'll either downsize the, the park, or try to work something out with the contractor at the size that was bid.
But we're going to accept the bid for $28,890?
Well, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Okay.
I added that language.
Okay. Okay.
It won't exceed the 25, because we've already indicated to the other, all the parties that we don't have any money to add.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do we need to amend that, or not?
No.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Before we go on to the third item, just would like to comment, if there's a possibility of putting any foam below that skateboard park, skateboard park, concrete, I would recommend it. Item number three had to do with considering sump pump inspection quotes. Our committee reviewed the results of the quotes, open for inspection of private property for inflow/infiltration from sump pumps. Two quotes were received, with the low quote being that of Bolton &amp; Mink, their amount was $29,000. The sump pump inspection program includes Borton Blad and Country Club Drive areas. These two areas have had numerous bypasses in the recent years, and they result in a moratorium on growth that serves a line or lift station. The funding for this is available for in-line item 51 of the 2011 Waste Water Treatment Collections Budget. Staff recommended accepting the low quote of Bolton &amp; Mink, and a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion that we do accept the low quote of Bolton &amp; Mink, the amount of 29 grand, to perform sump pump inspections and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the low quote of Bolton &amp; Mink for the amount of $29,000 to perform sump pump inspections and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. Discussion. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What does it actually mean when you say to perform sump pump inspections? What will they physically be doing? Will it be going to individual properties?
Yes. Knocking on doors, requesting permission to inspect the sump pumps.
To make sure.
Or discharge.
To make sure they're in compliance with our ordinance.
That's correct.
And if they're not, what occurs?
Well, we will diplomatically and cordially ask them to convert their systems and not discharge into the sanitary sewer system. And then if they want to, to do that in the wintertime for some unusual reason, they are allowed to make a permit application to the city. There's a block of time that we allow it, but we have our suspicions that, that privilege is being abused in some areas, and we're seeing it in the infiltration and in the treatment at the new plant.
And this really, Mr. Mayor, is, I've lived in my home since 1977, and I've never had water in my home before, my basement, and this year I have lots of it. So, and, you know, getting those sump pumps to pump into the urban gutter so it goes into the regular stormwater drains is important, otherwise you just keep recycling it again through your sump pump.
Thank you very much. Councilman Christensen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding.
It appears that we have to adopt a second resolution to reappropriate those dollars in the 2011 Collections Budget. Now that we've authorized the contract, we have to move the money.
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're still in discussion mode. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding, Mick, that we're also going to do some educational, or we, Bolton &amp; Mink is going to do something educationally through, what, the newspaper, Rack Eight, or...
That's part of the program. We're going to try to get some good information out to the general public, and education and communication will be our best bet, and hopefully people will pay attention and respond.
So they will be notified, or the newspaper's going to carry something notifying that we will be.
Yes.
Or Bolton &amp; Mink will be in those two areas. Or Bolton and Mink will be in those two areas. I'd also like to note that it is not illegal to have a, what's the switch they have for going into the city sanitary sewer in the wintertime. It's not illegal to do that.
As long as you're granted a permit.
You need to get a permit from October one through, is it April, or March?
Into March, I believe.
Okay. Uh-huh. But other times, through the summer and the rainy seasons, we need these people to pump it, discharge it either outside in their yard, or into the, well, basically into the storm sewer system, because we're getting too much water at the waste treatment plant. Now logically, you'd think more clean water out there is better, because it filters everything out, but I've been told that it's, it's bad for our waste treatment plant. We're wasting, what is it we're wasting? What is it?
We still have, whatever comes into the plant has to be treated, and so we're.
Clean water?
Yeah, we're treating clean water.
And it's costing us more money.
It costs us more money, and it uses up capacity.
Okay. Um, I think the public has a little better understanding, just from this discussion, then.
More discussion?
Did you, Councilman? I just, yeah, do we know, Mick, or Holly, how many people are, were affected, or how many residential properties we're looking at for inspection? Are we looking at one hundred, two hundred, three hundred? And, and Mick, also, you mentioned you have a strong suspicion that people are doing this. In other words, we know that people are violating it. Why haven't we done something about it already? Or, uh, as far as, as far as catching the people, it shouldn't, shouldn't be that difficult, I would think, by listening to the water run, running on a dry day and see who's, who's dumping it into there. But, um, I'm, I'm just curious what this cost is per household, that we're paying somebody to go around and knock on the door, and what that computes out to?
Uh, there's approximately five hundred and forty houses and businesses that would be inspected. And when, when the, when our department gets notified that there is a some pump that is discharging into sanitary, into the sanitary sewer, we do check if there's a permit. If not, we do notify that property owner to get a permit for, for the winter months.
Thank you, Holly.
I have a question that I, I need to ask, and I hope somebody can answer it, is those folks that are in non-compliance probably won't let you in. Then what? You knew I had to ask that question, right?
We send the chief in with his SWAT team, I don't know. Uh, well, then, I guess, you know, you make some assumptions, and, um, deal with it in other ways.
Okay. Now, you said that we needed a, we need to vote, I'm sorry.
One question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just any re-inspections? Are they covered by the Bolton and Mink contract to verify compliance?
Yeah, if they've been notified that they're not in compliance, they would be re-inspected to be sure that they come and, come within compliance. Yes.
Any more discussion? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do they need any special training to go and look?
No.
Okay.
No, not particularly. We have had summer interns do some of our some pump inspections in the past.
'Cause if there's like five hundred houses, not like fifty dollars a house?
It's about, according to their contract, I believe it's they're charging us thirty dollars per property. And then they have costs for workshops and a procedures manual and the public education piece, so, according to their quote, it's thirty dollars per household.
I'm just wondering if we couldn't use some staff, city staff? Like, well, the fire department is here, that'd be good PR work if they had guys that were available. Do you know you aren't gonna get an engineer from Bolton and Mink going into the homes?
No.
You're gonna have the low-end employees. So, are they providing any insurance for liability if something gets stolen out of the house, or?
Yeah.
There's a claim?
They would. It was just like any other agreement with a, a consultant. Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I thought that was one of the responsibilities the council people that wore. Thank you. Visit your neighbors.
Any further discussion? Now, correct me now on this. Mick, we, we need to vote on the first one, that's the roll call.
Bolton and Mink agreement.
Bolton and Mink agreement. An amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars. Roll call.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. And what is the second resolution?
It's to deal with the funding. To, Holly, introduce a motion that we, uh, fund this to rely on item fifty-one of the two thousand eleven WWTF collections budget.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to do the funding, as Ron said. Uh, discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Item number, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Motion carries.
Excuse me. Item number four. She was right. Um, this had to do with the wastewater treatment plant relocation project, uh, April monthly report from Donahue and Associates. Um, Ms. Rhonda Ray of Donahue and Associates briefed the committee on activities for the month of April related to the wastewater treatment plant relocation project. Project management activities included submittal pay request number nineteen for the thirty-year loan to the PFA for the Clean Water Revolving Fund. The firm continues to provide information for the city's asset management, maintenance, and operational program. Uh, work also continues on gravity collection, piping, and force main piping costs. Uh, Donahue and Associates is assisting legal counsel and city staff to provide information on the property acquisition. Um, the checklist for project deliverables was updated also. Projects zero eight thirteen D three and zero eight fourteen D four are substantially complete. Meetings continue between the city and property owners regarding the final restoration of properties. Um, also, project zero eight fifteen D five was approved for final project acceptance and final payment of May, excuse me, final payment in September of two thousand ten, and project D eight sixteen D six approved in January two thousand eleven. All systems at the new wastewater treatment facility are operational and are being operated by, entirely by city staff. The contract continues working on punch list items and post-startup services. Uh, they also continue to coordinate post-startup training, receive vendor O and M manuals, and work on the plant O and M manual. What's the O and M operation and maintenance? Using all these numbers and letters here. Um, the construction of project number ten seventeen B, which is decommissioning the old facility and construction in the administration building is complete. The contractor has declared substantial completion on the administration building as of February two thousand eleven. Contractor has removed the primary settling complex, excess flow basins, biofilter building, FRP odor control tower, gruffing filter, effluent pump station, chlorine building, second settling basin, sludge thickener, most of digesters one through four, and digester building. Say that three times fast. Uh, pre-bid conference was held for, uh, project eleven oh nine B two, decommissioning the Orton Blad and Arby's lift stations, and the sewer reroute. Uh, bid date for the project was May third of this year. City is working on salvaging control panel, antenna floats, transducer, and pumps from the Arby's lift station prior to commencement of the construction contract. The budget summary for the entire project is outlined in detail in the report. There being no further business to come before the meeting, the committee, the meeting was adjourned, and I would move to file these minutes unless there are questions or comments.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee of May twenty-fourth, two thousand eleven. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll go into the Community Development Committee report for May twenty-sixth. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community development meeting was held on May twenty-sixth. Item number one, uh, public comments for information only, there were no public comments. Item number two dealt with, uh, community cleanup, and it was a continuation, and this is for information only. Staff introduced the continued discussion of a citywide cleanup effort. Background was given to bring the committee members and others in attendance up to date on previous discussions. Mary Anish introduced Don Williams, Williamson from West Central Sanitation. Mr. Williamson said that his company has had different experiences in different cities, and he advocated that there should be some personal responsibility in the way of cost sharing on the part of people who dispose of unwanted items. Mr. Williamson suggested the city consider two options for the cleanup effort. The first option would be to provide a curbside pickup. This is the most costly method and would, would typically be done at city expense. This method recently cost the city of Wake Park thirty thousand dollars to do a curbside pickup. The second option would be to designate collection points and to provide dumpsters and roll-offs for disposal of waste products at those locations. This is less, is a less costly item. The cities of Painesville and Olivia charge for disposal, and he suggested that the city create a schedule for disposal as well. The designated collection points are typically manned by the private hauler or city staff, or a combination of the two. The committee discussed several concerns with a cleanup effort. Those concerns were that a city subsidy would become expected and could cause hoarding. Also, that people may try to dispose of hazardous waste. Problems in dealing with cultural differences was also discussed. Staff explained the zoning ordinance and municipal code standards for dealing with garbage and trash accumulation, and the enforcement authority the city has under each. The committee asked Charlie Lightsey from the Integration Collaborative for her assistance in soliciting participation by the Latino community. They specifically referenced the mobile home parks as locations where trash accumulation occurs on a near constant basis. Mrs. Lightsey said her office would be willing to make some calls and lead that effort. The committee requested the city staff work with Mr. Williamson and Ms. Lightsey to put together a community-wide cleanup disposal plan, and that it would be brought, brought back to the committee at the June sixteenth, two thousand eleven meeting. In the meantime, staff will also contact the Churchill Group, who owns the two mobile home parks, to request their participation in the cleanup efforts and payments. Item number three, the former Ace Sign, and this is a motion. Staff explained to the committee the ongoing land use issues at the former Ace Sign site on Fourteenth Street Southwest. The business had existed as a non-conforming use in a residential district. Since it was vacated and the county acquired it, there has been no suitable use found for the property because of the zoning classification. Staff was suggesting that the Planning Commission pursue an amendment to the R-two and R-three zoning district regulations that would allow indoor, indoor, non-residential storage as a conditional use. This would allow the Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider, for example, a request by a contractor who needed storage space, or by a resident who needed space to store vintage automobiles or other motorized equipment, where they don't have room on their site. The intent of the amendment would be to find uses that would create minimal activity because the site is in a residential neighborhood. A mo- a motion was made and seconded and passed for the following. Recommendation is that the Planning Commission be directed to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment to allow indoor, non-residential storage as a conditional use in the R-two and R-three zoning districts. Now make that recommendation.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded that the Planning Commission be directed to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment to allow indoor, non-residential storage as a conditional use in the R-two and R-three zoning districts. Um, discussion? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does the county own this property yet? Is tax forfeited, or did someone buy it?
It is still owned by Candia High County.
Okay. I had brought up an idea a while back about stormwater holding pond or detention pond? Would that area work?
Uh, if I recall correctly, staff did look at that, and because it's at the upper reaches of the watershed, it really doesn't, uh, collect any stormwater at that location. It's, it's pretty much at the top end of the, of the drainage area.
All right, thanks.
Further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries.
Uh, item number four is updates for information only. Staff provided updates as follows. The Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center is ready for construction. The city is just waiting to get a signed copy of the grant agreement from the state of Minnesota. Bueller, Bueller is up and running in the industrial park, and staff has been working with them to answer job Z questions. Wilmer Fabrication is operational at the former Burnix site. The city is just waiting for a copy of the signed business subsidy agreement to be, be returned from the state of Minnesota. Hangan and Associates is nearing completion of the building analysis and cost estimates for the former airport terminal building. That information is to be available in time for staff to review and make recommendations prior to a meeting with the FAA and SHIPO later in June. Two new commercial projects were approved by the Planning Commission. The businesses were an orthodontic clinic on Nineteenth Avenue Southwest, and a small retail strip center near Walmart on Nineteenth Avenue Southeast. Item five, Chairman Dawkins requested that staff provide an update on the reuse of the sixteen-bed mental health facility at the next meeting. There being no further business, uh, the meeting was adjourned, and if there are no questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for May twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Uh, the Labor Relations Committee report for June first. Councilman Amen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Present were Tim Johnson, Dennis Anderson, Jim Dawkins, Mick Schmidt, and myself. And Mary Anish, Ron Christiansen, and Bruce DeBleek are present also. Item number one on the agenda was, we noted that the Wilmer Municipal Utilities has asked that a discussion regarding proposed increases in meal loans, so we vetoed at the, previously the meeting, and are delayed, uh, be postponed until the utilities has an opportunity to review, uh, the proposed program. So this, uh, information will be considered and brought back with a later date. Item number two, we recognize Mar Calvin, our fire chief, who is present to discuss the, uh, with the committee a proposal to change the retirement programs for volunteer, paid, on-call firefighters. Uh, Chief Calvin introduced Mark Thompson, the president of the Wilmer Firefighter Relief Association, and Paul Cool was also with the Relief Association Secretary. Chief Calvin explained that the firefighters have researched, uh, and the Relief Association Board has approved participation in the PERA, which is Public Employees Retirement Account, sponsored statewide volunteer lump sum firefighters retirement plan. That was recently approved by the legislature. The PERA plan would provide a simplified approach to oversight while relieving the council, the city council, and the association of having to make annual determinations with regard to benefits. The program contains many of the same requirements vesting and allows for portability, uh, should a firefighter transfer to another community, uh, participating in the PERA program. The program would be fully funded and assuming, uh, a six percent rate of return, this again of assuming, uh, would allow the, for higher benefits in the future to the firefighters. Uh, the Relief Association Board of Directors, the fire chief, and the city administrator were all recommending approval of the. were all recommending approval of the PERA program at a $2,500 benefit level per year of service until January 2016, when the benefit level would increase to $3,500 per year of service. After discussion, motion was made and seconded to make the following recommendation that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to enroll the Wilmer Firefighters Relief Association in the PERA voluntary statewide lump-sum firefighter retirement plan. And I will introduce the resolution. Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. The mayor and the city administrator are hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to enroll the Wilmer Firefighters Relief Association in the PERA voluntary statewide lump-sum firefighter retirement plan. Discussion. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. The idea is to do this evidently is because it's going to be a better program for all the firefighters, meaning better return and a higher benefit in the future. What if the firefighter leaves here and goes to a community that doesn't participate in PERA? What happens to those funds for them?
Well, number one, you're saying that they go to a community that doesn't have the PERA program?
Yeah.
If they're -- it depends on where they are in their tenure with the department. If they're vested, I'm assuming they can carry something with and roll it over. If not, the money would simply stay in the fund.
Okay. Now, the fund that we're talking about, it's my understanding after attending a meeting that their present funds are all going to be rolled over into or next to the...
Into.
Into the -- is it the state PERA program? Is that what it is?
That's correct.
So, I also heard at that meeting that those funds are guaranteed to be on their own. I mean, they can't be depleted.
They're not being combined with other PERA programs.
So the funding, in other words, those funds would not go to -- to help pay out what's being paid out from PERA now because it's...
The state set up a program specifically for firefighters, volunteer firefighters.
They set up our deficit, too. It also says in here that the benefit level is $2,500 presently and then it will increase in 2016 to $3,500. Now, I'm assuming that would have to be approved because the city's guaranteeing that $2,500. Am I correct?
Yes.
So then in 2016, that's...
That's what we're -- that's what you're being asked to consider tonight, in fact.
So we're being asked to increase it in January 1st of 2016 to $3,500 or also?
That's correct. What the information you got at the committee meeting, and I believe I sent out some follow-up information last Friday to -- which was a result of a second or subsequent cost analysis and in both cases, it suggested that the return would be there to fund the $3,500.
I gotta get this straight. It suggests that the return there, the 6%, or that $3,500 is funded by the city? We're guaranteeing it?
Well, we would be guaranteeing it, but we're not funding it.
If we have to approve it, those funds are going to come from that -- their lump-sum fund, is what you're telling me then?
It comes from their investment program.
Okay. But if the investment program didn't get the return that they're saying on here...
Then you would have a...
We're liable for it.
Then you would have a responsibility.
Okay. So the city's being sold this idea that there's going to be enough money in those funds assuming a 6% return to give them that $3,500 increase. Just seems strange to me that we're guaranteeing an increase in January 1st of 2016 when we don't know what's going to happen between now and then.
Well, there's been some discussion under the current system for increases on a more immediate basis.
I know. I've been part of those discussions.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is delaying it for a while and letting the fund build up through earnings...
Mm-hmm.
That are based on the criteria that you saw in the analysis that both...
That you sent out.
The chief provided at the Labor Relations Committee meeting and that I sent out to you on Friday.
Well, I'm all for them getting more and moving up and on in this. I just, assuming a 6% rate of return, just seems -- it don't seem real today. It's just, you know, that's for the next, between now and 2016. And I don't -- is anybody else concerned about this or am I the only one? If not, I'll...
Go ahead, Councilman Anderson.
I think you have to look at the full analysis and I think the other thing to remember is it could fund $3,500.
I think...
Probably everybody is not going to claim it on January 1st, 2016. You know, I can't pretend to understand their analysis, but that's what these folks do and they've done it twice, so I'm comfortable with it.
Mr. Mayor, this Assistant Fire Chief Jeff Gilbertson and the President of the Relief Association, Mark Thompson, are here. If you want to ask them any questions directly.
I do have one question. Is this an automatic then on January 1st, 2016?
Yes.
Is that an automatic? Any other questions or concerns? Councilman Omen.
Well, by committing to this, we are extending the message that we are going to be committed to help in support the retirement plan. But also during that process and during that time, if things should change, as Mr. Christensen is maybe concerned about what might happen, don't we also approve the compensation that they receive on an hourly basis during that time?
Yes.
For 2016? So there are ways of looking at it if you're looking at a concern of overextending ourselves that we'll have to deal with on an ongoing basis. Also, I think one of the primary reasons was the current administrator of the fund, their costs were approximately $16,000 a year and they felt that their money would be better spent through the PERA administering, which would save them about $15,000 or $14,500 a year, which would be invested in everyone's retirement plan rather than to the current person that was administering the funds. I think that was one of the primary reasons, wasn't it?
Any further discussion? I think we have the motion already roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Dubleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries.
Item number three was we announced it was time to attend the committee to close the meeting for employment contract negotiations and various city bargaining groups, that be the Three Asmi Groups and the LALS and the Department of Health. And we closed the meeting and then we reopened the meeting and since there is no further business, we move to adjourn and if there's any questions, we'll try to answer them. If not, we'll file the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Committee meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. At this time, we'll go into the consideration of the temporary liquor license at the Oaks at Eagle Creek. And Kevin, would you explain that to us?
Mary Yanish, members of the council, Wilmer Fest week is just about upon us and on behalf of the Wilmer J.C.'s who are conducting the Thursday night downtown block party, Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC, doing business at the Oaks at Eagle Creek, will be sponsoring this peanut bar, which will be on Becker Avenue. The fenced-in area will have a beer garden that will run from 3:00 PM till midnight along with their music and their dancing. To do that, we need the community festival special event on-sale liquor temporary license. We have reviewed all the documentation and everything is in order and it's staff recommendation that we approve the liquor license on a roll call vote.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the new temporary liquor license at the Oaks at the Eagle Creek. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Omen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Dubleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries. Kevin, as long as we have you up there, consideration of the on-sale wine liquor license for the baseball Stingers.
Mary Yanish, members of the council, pursuant to the earlier scheduled public hearing where we amended Section 3 of our municipal code to allow the issuance of a wine license to collegiate football team, our baseball team owner. The Wilmer Baseball LLC has applied for their wine license. Upon approval, it would be effective June 14 at the second publication of the ordinance adopted. It is staff's recommendation that we grant them a wine license, subject to the city attorney approval of their insurance. It failed today after his review and he'll have to amend a couple of items. So our staff's recommendation is to prove that in a roll call vote, subject to approval of the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the new license as presented with the approval of the city attorney. Discussion. Councilman Omen.
Just a comment. I'm sure you're probably wondering, or some people might be wondering why I voted against the previous action to allow the wine license out there. I remember the previous discussion we had when the Singers came into town and I appreciate it. I think it's the greatest thing we have going for us. I hear nothing but positive things about people coming from Granite Falls and watching the ballgame. It's pristine, beautifully kept up, baseball diamonds. So Public Works, you're doing a great job and it is a great asset to have the community. But I remember in the discussion about serving beer, we were concerned about plastic bottles versus glass bottles and things that happened with related alcohol activities and there is concern there. I just thought it was a baseball game, not a bar, and I can't support this. I don't think it's really necessary. I don't know if the revenues are that short or whatever, but I thought this was a social event for family and I don't completely agree with it. I don't have anything against anybody drinking. I just don't agree with the philosophy of having that type of facility with an open bar, kind of an attitude. It's an asset to the community. I don't want to say that it's a negative thing. It's very positive, but I don't think alcohol is the precedence for that type of setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Omen. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Dubleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Omen.
No.
Six ayes, one nay.
The motion carries. With that, we will move into council committee dates. Councilman Anderson.
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 13th at 4:45.
Councilman Christensen on the Public Works.
Public Works, Public Safety will meet the next day, Tuesday, 6:14, 2011. 4:45.
Councilman Dokken.
16 June, 4:45, Conference Room 1.
And Councilman Omen.
Nothing scheduled yet, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Under miscellaneous, Councilman Anderson said that he would like to speak.
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about a fundraising event that Safe Avenues is putting on and it's going to be for children of domestic violence. The kids that are subjected to domestic violence really suffer a lot. And that project is Project Impact and we've been working, actually Councilman Reese and I have been working on a bike ride fundraiser for Project Impact and it will be on June 18th. It's out at the MinWest Campus. It starts at the Life Center parking lot and it's a family ride. We'll go from there, ride out to the trail and the families can ride as far as they want to go. We're suggesting going no further than, you know, 10 miles out, which would be a 20-mile round trip. Then when they come back, there'll be some gifts and some entertainment for the kids and there'll be some hot dogs and things like that. Registration, you can either get it online at wilmershelter.com or you can register the day of the event. Registration starts at 8:00 AM and the ride is going to start at 9:00. So we're looking for families. We're hoping we can get a good turnout because it's for a wonderful cause. So I appreciate your support on that.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Omen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind it in senior Friday memo, tomorrow evening at the Ridgewater College, there is a meeting starting at 6:30 PM with Minnesota Department of Transportation. It's on the long-term planning and development of roads and infrastructure in the state of Minnesota. If anybody in the community or anybody's interested or has a comment or concern, the public is, it's open to the public and it might be in the paper also. I don't know if anybody from staff plans on being there or if there's any specific items we need to address as a council or from the mayor or from staff, but I plan on being there and if anybody else is, that's great, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Omen. Councilman Dokken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a week ago, it was Memorial Day and we had a really tremendous turnout at Fairview Cemetery and the speaker for that was one of our very own Sergeant Jim Felton, soon-to-be Captain Jim Felton, was there and delivered just a really great Memorial Day address and many people appreciated what he had to say. And then this past Wednesday, we had our American Legion meeting and Chief Wifels was there and Sergeant Felton was there and the Post really appreciated both of you coming out and being a part of our group. It was nice of you to do that. And in fact, the chief gave, I think I've got about an eight-minute video of the nice things you had to say about Sergeant Felton. And then June 14th, of course, is Flag Day and it's also the 10th anniversary of the Flags of Honor Building that we have out at the Flags of Honor site and of course, that belongs now to the city. And Dale Johnson helped us considerably get it started 10 years ago and so the flags will go up at 7:00 o'clock in the morning on Flag Day, the 14th, and they'll come down at 5:00. So anybody would like to come out and we'd encourage you to be there. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, I received my Nation's Cities Weekly and the main article above the fold is changing paradigm, Cities and Regions Embracing Global Interdependence. And as I read through this, and I hope you would read through it, I think we have what this writer is talking about in the form of MinWest Technology. I think there's a lot of things that they bring up in this Nation's Cities Weekly that the city of Wilmer and Candia High County have got a jump on it, I believe, and just think that it's a great place.
Thank you. If I may, I would just like to add to Councilman Dokken's saying that the flag park out there, if you haven't had the opportunity, in all honesty, I haven't really stopped. I saw it when it was beautiful, but I stopped here about a week ago when it was, when the flags were flying. It's beautiful and it's a wonderful, it's so well-kept up, a wonderful place to spend a few moments and just think. I encourage you, if you haven't been out there, to stop out there and see what we have to offer out there. Also, I have a note from Chief Wifels here to make an announcement that there will be a cops meeting tomorrow night at the Wilmer Police Department, hosted by the Wilmer Police Department, scheduled at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 27th, tomorrow night, or June 7th. Did I say 27th? June 7th, tomorrow night, at the training room at the Fire Department. All members of the public are invited to attend. So if you're not going out to Ridgewater College, please attend the cops meeting. With that, I will entertain more...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And Mr. Christensen. Hawkins, Inc.
Hawkins, Inc., sold the city $16,618 worth of ferrot chloride for their waste treatment plant.
I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.